Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Soddy City Council meeting for February 22nd, 2021. The clerk, please call the roll.
Dean?
Here.
Leo?
Here.
Louis?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Stanton?
Here.
Truster?
Here.
Becken?
Here. All members, council members are present. Moving on to first agenda item, approval of regular city council meeting minutes from February 8th, 2021. Do I have a meeting, a motion to approve the minutes, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I meant, I move that we approve the regular city council meeting of February 8th, 2021 as provided.
Second.
The second was that from?
Garnet.
Garnet, okay. So the motion by Peterson, seconded by Louis, to approve the minutes as presented. Council have any comments, corrections? If none, with a clerk, please call a roll on the motion.
Peterson?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes, a motion carried unanimously. There is no comments by the mayor this evening. Next item is comments from our city manager, Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Earlier today, I emailed all council members a city management report with little to zero expectations that everyone would read that in advance of the meeting. But I will just hit the highlights right now for you all, and this is in order of no particular importance. So, starting first with the Blue Star Trail, currently developing a question and answer document, working with both Holly and Mr. Donovan from the Friends of the Blue Star Trail Group. And so that's going to be for the use of the council and the public. Mr. Donovan did submit also a memo to the city managers, just to kind of lay out where things are at. So between these two documents, the Q and A document and the memo, I think we're really making progress on understanding where this whole process is at. So the next step for the council is going to be an interlocal agreement. So you're going to see that at a future meeting, probably late March. We'll, we'll see when we can get the first draft in front of you. Also, in the interim, the committee has been working on soliciting engineering services, and they're working through that, and they're going to make a recommendation to the council as well. Holly, is there anything you'd like to add to that short blurb? Okay.
No.
Moving.
I think you said that very well.
Thank you. Moving on, Dune Ridge updates. So the fence issue, so Dune Ridge, I feel like we have like three different buckets that we could put, put the issues in. One of which is the fence issue, another being the bathroom kitchenette, and then third item, which is on your agenda tonight, is the floating home issue. So regarding the fence with Dune Ridge, staff has been in contact with the developer. We're having a conversation as well as legal counsel. We're waiting for them to submit a new plan for that fence to Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals. If you recall, the council wanted the development team to go through the, the normal process or processes for getting approval for that fence. So legal counsel and staff working with development team on that. Bathroom with kitchenette, that too would need to go to the Plan Commission and/or Zoning Board of Appeals. However, absent any change in zoning, this would appear to me to be a nonstarter. I think you all litigated this a while back, and nothing much has changed, so I'm not sure where that's going exactly, but we'll see if they want to submit a, submit a plan. Any questions on that item? Hearing none. Just generally on the road resurfacing, meeting with the engineer, going over those various projects, getting a handle on the priority and the timing of those road resurfacing projects that are in the budget. The one update that I do have is that Campbell Road was slated for a summer project, and I think that was a mix of Douglas getting it into their budget, and then Douglas feeling like Sagatuck wanted to move rather quickly on that, so somehow it got into a summer schedule. But speaking with the city manager, he seems to think it would be perfectly okay to push that back to a shoulder, shoulder season project in the fall. And I would recommend that you, you do that. Okay, moving on. I've emailed each of the council members in regards to the projects that they would like to see accomplished. And as of the moment, I think we're at about sixty, six zero various projects. So the next step is for staff to kind of put those sixty projects, and I'm guessing there's probably be seventy-five by the time we're done with this list, into different categories, projects that are budgeted and high priority, kind of low hanging fruit, and then maybe projects that are midsize, not quite budgeted, but have been discussed a lot, and then kind of these longer vision projects. We'll push that back out for the council to rank those projects. And then we will have a pretty good idea of where those fall out amongst the council. And then I would recommend that the council get together at a strategic planning workshop to discuss those. So on that front, I have been in discussions with the vendor that the city was looking at meeting with to hold a strategic planning meeting. And she was pretty adamant that the council meet in person, especially given the, the fact that we have some new council members. She thought that was important, and I, and I was talking to Mayor Pro Tem about that, and she offered up the, the space at Isabel's to, to conduct that meeting. So we'll put that on a March agenda for your discussion, whether you'd like to do that or not and move ahead with that meeting. I know that I would really appreciate having some prioritization of the projects and having that initial meeting, so I hope that works out for everyone. Any questions on that? Okay, hearing none. Radar signs, so Mayor Becken mentioned that I think a lot of people would like to see some more of those radar speed limit feedback signs, and especially some of the ones that are more portable, like the city of Douglas has. And so there's a long lead time on those signs, so that's something that you'll see at your, your March meeting. Mill foil update. So as a team, we have Erin and Cindy working on and/or have created a map to determine the ownership, and I think there's twenty-nine owners that are involved in the shoreline mill foil treatment. And you all decided to charge them for that shoreline property. So they've developed a map, they've measured out the, the linear footage of the frontage, and we have a cost from aquatic doctors, lake doctors or aquatic doctors, for a per foot cost. And so what we'll do is invoice each of those owners who want to participate in the treatment, and we'll get those invoices out through Peter mid-April and with an expectation that will, will return the payment to us by mid-May. And then we're looking at the first treatment to be scheduled mid-June, weather dependent, a second application mid to late July, and then if needed, another treatment in mid to late August. I have discussed splitting the permit fee with Eagle with, with Douglas. So there's a little more research to be done there, if Douglas has already paid it or what have you, but aquatic doctors, they'll help us with, with that, with that bit. Any questions on the mill foil? All right, hearing none, I must be doing really, really good. Police interceptor, that vehicle has been delivered to Mark's Auto Body and Allegan County Sheriff. Department has been helping out with that as well as Department of Public Works. I know that Lieutenant Enfield is going to be on the call tonight, so he can give us an update on that. And then last but not least, Oval Beach. Staff has discussed getting the advertisements out there for the open positions, one of which is a beach manager position. So if you know anyone that wants a fun summer job, once we get that advertisement out there, you, you may want to let them know. And then also, at Peter's suggestion, staff will be recommending that the council review the, the schedule of fees for, for Oval Beach, and potentially raising a fee. So that's the manager's report, happy to answer any questions now or catch me offline, and happy to discuss any of these items.
Counsel, any specific questions regarding Ryan's report?
If none, I know I.
Thanks, Ryan, sorry.
That's all right, Garnet. I, I think I'm speaking on behalf of the council that we appreciate these updates. It keeps us from asking questions or sending you emails, and I think it's, it's, it's great information for us and for the community to know some of the high priority things that are, are being worked on. So moving along, the next agenda item is agenda changes, additions or deletions. Ryan, do we have anything to add?
There was a brief discussion with, with Garnet whether or not we should have Dan Fox's report under the committee reports, unless you want to keep them under guest speakers. But I think we have either option as presented in the agenda.
I, I think we've, we've, we've addressed that issue, so for, for this evening, we'll just leave it at, as is.
Very good.
Okay. Moving on, now we are in the item, or the agenda item for guest speakers. Lieutenant Enfield, are you with us?
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes, are you loud and clear?
Okay.
Brett, it's all yours.
Great. Okay, yeah, I, the car was taken Thursday to Mark's. I would expect that probably to be a couple of weeks before that gets outfitted, and usually typically what happens is we then take it to the graphics place, and then depending on their schedules and so forth, the graphics get put on it and all that. So hopefully that the vehicle will be ready here in the next couple of weeks to a month or so. Obviously, probably be nice to get it done probably after all the snow and salt off the roads and stuff like that to keep it out of the elements for a couple of months. But, yeah, we'll get that into service. I had a chance to review some of the social district plans from the Thursday workshop. There was a couple of things in that, in that that I had talked to Ryan a little bit about, and I thought I'd bring it to your guys' attention just for some scheduling issues and other things. From the original plan, it looked like it got maybe possibly shifted to some of the warmer times and stuff. I just, during that, it may be some staffing issues with maybe some larger crowds being drawn and stuff like that. So it could be something that we could obviously work through and stuff, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention that, that could be an issue coming. Also, I saw on there about the cups and stuff, I just didn't know if it could maybe put something in there about the date. That, that cup was issued, or it may be a time also, I could see that these cups could be reused. And maybe an issue, you know, down the line was drinks coming in from, you know, people's vehicles and stuff, and just filling those cups up and kind of, you know, ruining the intent of what these cups are actually for, to promote, you know, some of the businesses and stuff, and, and some social dispersing of during the COVID issues and so forth. So, and I think it probably maybe alleviates some of the issues that some of the establishments, establishments may have, where somebody's walking around with a cup, and, you know, they're filling their own drinks, they may be, need to possibly some little larger intoxication than if there's some checks and balances with the restaurants and stuff, you know, watching who they're serving and so forth. So that's about it. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Counsel have anything for Lieutenant Enfield this evening?
Mayor, this is Garnet.
Sure.
Following up on Lieutenant Enfield's comment about the social district. Brett, can you share with us any inside data, the like from Allegan City since the Allegan Sheriff's Office patrols their social district? Anything to share with us that's helpful?
Yeah, Allegan, Allegan City, I, I had talked to their chief, they, they currently have one bar, which is Shane Dorst, that enrolled in that. And they haven't had any issues, and obviously, as I kind of alluded to before, during the colder, you know, times, or slower times and stuff like that, that, you know, there has not been any issue at all with, with their social district or any problem, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other council questions? If none, we'll let Brett go this evening, and thank you for your report, Brett. Always good to hear from you.
Yeah, no problem. If you guys need anything, obviously feel free to reach out or get with Ryan, and I can hopefully answer any of the questions for you guys. Thanks.
All right, okay, thank you. Dan Fox, are you out there this evening for the fire district?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Thanks, Garnet, for looking after my schedule. And I want to apologize, last, your last meeting, it may have, and I told the mayor this afterward, it may have looked like I was ignoring the request to whether there was a fire board report at your last meeting. There had been no fire board meeting. I had left in front of the computer, and I only found out about missing out on that part afterwards. Anyway, I was not ignoring anyone, so, and here you go. Proof of that, tonight is the, my report on the Fire Board's fifteen February meeting. In order here, we approved payments in the amount of one hundred and forty-one thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and six cents. Included in that was the payout of, or payment of forty-two thousand and some odd dollars, which was the final installment on, on a loan for the purchase of truck number twenty-one twelve. We reviewed the districts, the fire district's year-to-date financial report, revenues and expenses continue to be in line with budget. We reviewed incident reports, I believe all that has been shared with you directly by email from the chief, with notably motor vehicle accidents up due to weather, and a discussion related there to, to the fire chiefs and staff's interaction with MDOT, and helping to get MDOT to prioritize the resurfacing of roughly some amount, seven mile segment of I-196 on both sides of the Kalamazoo River Bridge because the surface there is a change in surface, and it is resulting in, in people having difficulty or losing, maybe they're speeding or whatever, but they hit a different surface, the car reacts, and the driver overreacts. In any case, that's been prioritized and will be taken care of as I understand it this summer. Chief Janik shared information on the hiring of six new paid-on-call staff, five already certified firefighters, two of whom are presently serving other nearby fire departments, Craft Shop, Craft Shop, obviously, and Hamilton. We discussed staff well-being provisions in light of recent calls involving particularly emotionally traumatic events, which no matter how well-trained you are, no matter how stealed you are, no matter how experienced you are as a fire rescue person, professional, counseling and to alleviate the inevitable stress and reaction to that is important to be at minimum offered and ideally encouraged. That is taking place since our meeting. Chief informed me that HelpNet, which is the contracted employee assistance service provider, has been on site at the fire district, the fire department this week. Chief Janik expressed the fire district's gratitude to Lake Vista's super value in Douglas for the donation of a pallet load of bottled water. This continues their generosity over several years. He said he can't remember the last time the district has had to pay for bottled water. There were two grant, pending grant applications, which if awarded, would yield a total of just over forty thousand dollars. Briefly reviewed the fire district board of appeals findings and ruling concerning a development in the township where the, the appellant's request was denied. The only update on that is that a subpoena has already been served to the fire district related to upcoming legal proceedings on the same matter. We approved an equipment disposal of extrication equipment, the Jaws of Life deal, to Overisal Township in the amount of nineteen thousand dollars, which would come to, to this Sagatuck Fire District. Our district has already, as of mid-last year, I believe, had replaced their jaws of life. So this was not only, I mean, it's basically excess, and it really was a nifty deal because that's a substantial amount of money for regained for equipment that was basically in a garage or in the, in storage. Reviewed an ongoing Allegan County Health Commission study related to groundwater quality in the county in light of rap, the very rapidly increasing number of wells, private wells in the county. It's something, it's, it's a matter of interest and concern to the fire district. I would argue it's also, it should be a matter of interest and concern to the, to the three jurisdictions, in particular the township, sorry Cindy, because they, they get most of the wealth. We agreed to continue the Fire Board subcommittee's work to develop, for lack of a better term, what we're calling a human resources dashboard, financial management tool for use by the board, so that's ongoing with Peter's help. We unanimously approved a three percent increase in the fire chief's base salary effective as of the date of that meeting, which is the fifteenth of February. And we received both a personal note and a hundred and fifty dollar donation expressing appreciation for the professional response of the, of the department to recent chimney fire, which I believe was in Sagatuck. If you have any questions, I'm happy to address them.
All right. Counsel have any questions for Dan this evening?
Mr. Mayor, just a quick question.
Sure, Lauren.
Dan, do you, is it posted on the fire department's website, like the entire budget with invoices and any payouts or anything like that? Is it, are you, is that where that we can find, the public can find?
The, the packet, just like your packet, your board packet, the fire board's package for those meetings, which include all the disbursements. Month by month, is, is, is on there, and I, I'm pretty sure, and maybe Peter knows a better answer to this than I do. I think you can, just like you can with the city of Sagatuck, I think you can just sign up, and you would get that package just like I get the pack.
Okay, great, thanks.
All right, any other questions for Dan? All right, for those of you who may be wondering why Dan is appearing under guest speakers instead of boards and commissions, it's, it's not very often that we have reports given on boards and commissions by non-council members. In the past, we've had reports from such of our other, other organizations like Fire District, the inner urban, et cetera, that those persons also presenting were non-council members. In the past, even though it hasn't happened much out of courtesy, we've allowed those types of reports to be given under guest speakers in the event those individuals did not want to stick around for the whole meeting. And so I just think it's a, it, it's a courtesy well worth following, with insisting that the presenter only state information regarding his board reports and not going off on any tangent or giving his personal opinion on other agenda items. So that's kind of what Ryan alluded to under his comments, and I just thought I'd give an update to counsel on that. So thanks again, Dan, for your report. Moving on to public comments. This is a portion of the meeting where council allows comments from the public regarding any agenda item. If you wish to address the council, please ask to be recognized, identify yourself by name and community of residence. Limit your comments to, to three minutes. And so anyone who wish to address the council, please ask to be recognized, and we'll try to find you out there.
Mr. Mayor, Jerry Johnson.
Okay, Mr. Johnson, you're recognized.
Yes, hi, my name is Jerry Johnson, and.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jerry.
That's, that's okay, no worries, not at all. I am with the City of Northville Downtown Development Authority, and I've had a couple of conversations with Holly about how our social district is going and how the shutdown of our streets has, you know, has rolled out. And I just wanted to let you know that we have had a tremendous success. We have two streets, two blocks closed, and our city council just voted to keep it closed for another year through April of 2022. Because of the success, we did a survey, and twenty-nine hundred people answered our survey, and the overwhelming sentiment, probably ninety-eight percent, was to keep the streets closed, that it's been nothing but good for Northville. In terms of the specific social district, that too has been just a real welcome addition to our community. We've had absolutely no issues with it whatsoever. We have about eleven restaurants participating in the social district in that two-block street closure area, and they, of course, love it. I mean, it's just really increased their business and has helped during this unprecedented time. And of course, the community loves it because they can get a beer or a glass of wine and walk the streets of downtown Northville. Sometimes there may be an hour, hour and a half wait to have outdoor dining seating, and so it's nice to be able to get a beverage and just walk around with it and sit at some of the common tables outside. For the winter, we built stands and pods where people could enjoy to-go food with a beverage and stay warm under a protected shelter. So I just wanted, and we've had no police incidents, absolutely zero. Occasionally, somebody will walk beyond the social district borders, but nothing that's become a, an issue for us. The one thing that's remarkable is the amount it has increased traffic in downtown, not car traffic, foot traffic. So we used to kind of be known as a sleepy little town with a very little foot traffic, and now we are just really crazy activities going on. We have cornhole in the streets, and it's attracted thirty-somethings to come into Northville, which was always sort of our goal, to get younger people to come to town. So, so yeah, I just wanted to tell you, if you're considering it, we have nothing but positive things to say, and we would be help, happy to help you any way we could.
All right, thank you for your, your comments this evening, Ms. Johnson.
You're welcome.
Anyone else out there like to address counsel?
Glenna DeYoung, I think, was next, and then RNC guest, and also Sue Chef, I don't know what your real name is, sorry.
Okay. All right.
And also Wally Peterson.
Okay, so first person was Glenna?
That's correct.
Yes.
Great, good evening, Glenna DeYoung, Sagatuck resident. I would like to speak to agenda item thirteen E, and I'm in favor of social districts being established in Sagatuck. In fact, I'm always in favor of trying new things, especially that benefit our local businesses that are struggling under challenges caused by the pandemic. Today, I spent some time on the Michigan legislative website and reviewed House Bill fifty-seven eighty-one, which was passed by our senate, by our state legislature, signed by Governor Whitmer, and enacted as Public Act one twenty-four in 2020 that allows for the establishment of social districts. This bill went from introduction to passage in a little over a month. This is extraordinarily fast, especially for a state legislature. But the Republican legislature, the Democratic governor, recognized the need to act quickly to give Michigan businesses, including restaurants and bars, a fighting chance during this tough time. For background, I also reviewed the legislative analyses by both the House and the Senate that accompany all introduced bills, and I want to read from the problem statement in the bill analysis from the House. So this is the background they gave, they always write up these analyses about what the problem was, and so why the bill was introduced. was introduced. Closures, stay-at-home orders and limitations on open hours or capacity restrictions due to the COVID nineteen pandemic have had, had a severe impact on many business sectors. Restaurants and bars have been hit particularly hard. It goes on to say later, "Social distancing requirements mean that few patrons can dine in, at, in at small establishments and limits on how many people can be inside larger establishments have made it hard for bars and restaurants to generate revenue sufficient to cover operating costs and pay staff. The profit margins for bars and restaurants is notoriously low. And even in the strongest of economies, economies, many fail within the first few years of opening. Given the negative impact widespread closures of bars and restaurants could have on communities and the state's economy, some believed abuse, a boost could be given to these businesses if certain liquor laws were amended." In fact, a large majority of the legislators agreed with this bill passing in the House with seventy percent support in the House and eighty percent support in the Senate. These are overwhelming margins in a decidedly nonpartisan vote. Note that the Public Act effective July first, twenty twenty allows for establishment of social districts per, per the process that the city council is following right now and has established the guidelines with regard to social districts. It will not be the wild, wild west. Many cities across Michigan have established social districts and have reported great success. Let's not drag our feet on this opportunity. Our businesses need help now. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenna. Next, how about Sue Chef?
Hi, it's Sue Chayton and Eric Chayton from Mermaid and Baldi Smoke Meats.
So, and Eric, good evening.
Hey, how are you?
Good.
That's the last speaker, by the way, that was three minutes exactly. It was, it was really kind of perfect, I thought. So, so I simply wanted to share a few of my thoughts of encouragement and the great faith that I have in the elected officials that we have in place right now with the challenges that Sagatuck has had with the floods and of course coronavirus. I think that my overreaching message is the council has responsibly piloted the, the fence program so you could, you know, fence in your area in front of the restaurants and businesses. And I think they're, they're moving forward with pilot programs that are very responsible and we should allow them to continue to throw stuff up against the wall. And as long as it, it's vetted and it has the responsibility of putting the big toe in and not just going right into it and, and the support of the, the sheriff's department. I think we're very fortunate to, to have a group of folks that's pushing the envelope to try and keep our businesses going. So I'm a hundred percent for the spirit of it.
Okay, thank you, Eric.
That's all I have to say today.
Okay, Eric, for the record, can you identify yourself and where you reside, please?
Yes, Eric Chayton, owner of River and OD Hospitality Group.
Mermaid Bar and Grill in Baldi Smoke Meat.
Right, okay. Thank you. Thank you for comments.
Thank you.
You bet. Anyone else out there, please?
RNC guest, I believe was next.
Hi, can you hear us?
Yes.
Richard Williams, Christian Kendall, ten fifty Elizabeth Street. We sent a letter to council today in opposition to the current social district plan, but we support social districts. I'll read the letter.
The proposed social district, SD, is too large for a small historic village. Sagatuck's history carries with it an elevated level of expectations from its longtime and new visitors. But this proposed SD, visitors and customers are not given the choice of being within an alcohol consumption area or not. Customers and visitors unwittingly placed into it. The proposed SD encompasses too many residential homes and lodging areas and the proposed SD encroaches upon our private property and businesses. Any SD should be within a confined area that includes adequate space that would achieve the state's intent of a safe and controlled SD. The proposed SD places businesses in jeopardy of not following established COVID protocols and regulations with regard to facial coverings. Any SD in Sagatuck should not permit alcohol in non MLCC licensed businesses in an effort to minimize COVID spread. Furthermore, the SD plan contradicts statements by city officials during council meetings saying Sagatuck is a COVID-safe practices town. The expected promotion of this proposed citywide SD will encourage drinkers to remove their facial coverings as they imbibe all throughout town. The proposed plan also surrounds visitors and customers with the greater risk of being confronted with the disease of al, active alcoholism. It's an affront to those in recovery. What a surprise it might be to a visitor or customer in recovery to find on their shopping trip to Sagatuck that they're in the middle of a big blocks-long bar. What a surprise to a parent to find that they've unknowingly brought their minor children to a citywide outdoor bar. All these situations are triggered by just walking around our village under this proposed SD. There is no indication in the proposal for alcohol abuse resources. There is no indication in the proposal for adding additional resources of law enforcement. Overall, we are in favor of a properly researched SD plan that solicits input from the entire community and provides for a segregated SD common area within town. This taxpayer and property owner was not contacted to ask for input regarding being placed inside the proposed SD, and that is wrong. After the temporary regulatory shutdown, businesses chose not to open or open. Businesses chose to adapt or not. The city has been willing to temporarily modify its regulations for the benefits of some. The proposed SD does not allow for visitors and customers to choose. The proposed plan is too big and undefined. Sagatuck needs an SD plan that allows for the consumption of alcohol in a designated area or areas. More work is needed to craft an SD that addresses how to respond to a temporary pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard, for your comments. Anyone else out there that we can identify?
Yes, sir, I'm a, I apologize, I don't know who is next, but Wally Peterson?
Yes. Good evening, Wally.
You're on mute, Wally.
Hello, hi, everybody. Wally Peterson, owner of Amazway. I live in Fenville, but we've been in business in Sagatuck since two thousand and four. I actually am enthusiastic about the social district. I'm looking at it as a pilot study, somebody who's open Friday through Sunday in Sagatuck in the dead of winter, it can be very, very lonely. Little foot traffic in our store, much less, there's not much foot traffic in the city itself, so I don't take it personally. My understanding is, is that this is, this would not be something that we'd be doing in the height of the season. It would be something that we would be testing through Memorial Day. And in the spirit of trying new things to try to attract people downtown, I am for it. I'm very COVID-conscious. We, right now, when people come into our store with a cup of coffee, which we will allow people to bring a drink into the store, but we tell them at the door, you, please do not drink your coffee while you're in our store. So I, I'm not concerned really about people drinking within our premises. And I understand why there would be that concern. But I, I do agree with some of the other speakers, these are unprecedented times and I think we need to try new and different things. And if other cities have been having success with it, I'm more than open to listening to them and learning from them and following the proper guidelines to benefit all of us. So that's all I wanted to say.
All right. Thank you, Wally, for your comments. Anyone else this evening, please?
I think Marsha Casper was next.
Hey.
Can people hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Yeah, I'm Marsha Casper, I'm a resident of Sagatuck and I'm speaking in support of agenda item thirteen E on social districts. First, I wanted to start with that I support the pop-up patios and the committee work that was completed by past and current committee members, Jane Burplank, Chris Peterson, Cindy Osmond and Lauren Stanton. Thank you very much for that work. The process for the pop-up patio approval included a workshop. There was a legal review and a motion was passed for the staff to administrating, administratively issue the permits. And it was a success for businesses who participated. I see the creation of a social district as an extension of the pop-ups. And so I would like to start the same way. I'd like to thank the committee members who worked on this, Lauren Stanton, Chris Peterson, Cindy Osmond and Ryan Heiss. There was a workshop completed and the processing also included a legal review. And I support this committee work. I believe it will help the downtown businesses, especially those hit the hardest by COVID nineteen restrictions. I also believe in action learning. You take ideas, you evaluate pros and cons. And if a go, a decision, you know, yes, let's go for it, is, you develop plans, you implement, you monitor and review the results and then you make improvements or go in another direction. I'm awe for trying new things, as Wally just, just said. The pop-ups have shown that new ideas do work. Don't let perfection and/or fear and/or a hundred percent agreement get in the way of trying something new. Vibrant communities and businesses stay alive and grow by their willingness to adapt and change to current challenges. And we're definitely in a challenge with COVID and trying out opportunities that these challenges bring. And finally, like regarding the walking around, eating, drinking issue, that happens today. As Wally mentioned, people walk around with cup, with coffee, they have their seven eleven cups, drinking their pop, eating hot dogs, eating sandwiches, and there isn't going to be anything different by having the social district. Thank you.
Thank you, Marsha, for your comments. Anyone else?
I'm not sharing. I think Lauren Flanagan.
Lauren Flanagan?
Yeah, Lauren Flanagan, resident of Fenville with properties in Sagatuck and Douglas. I thank you, Marsh, I agree with a lot of what you said. I think the pop-up patios have been great. We've gotten good national feedback as well as state feedback and that's driven additional visitors to our community, which was the spirit of why we brought it in to help our local businesses with increased visitors who felt safe in conjunction with our safety programs. I think we need to do more on safety to take it up another notch. In general, I'm really in favor of the social district. I guess I have a couple concerns, which hopefully can be addressed in the pilot. Definitely want to make sure that, you know, we're not undoing any of the positive PR because of underage drinking or, you know, public displays of drunkenness or rowdiness. That would be contrary to what we've done. I think, you know, we can probably mitigate that with, you know, the little bracelets that say you've been ID'd and, you know, only beer and wine. And there's probably practical things we can figure out. But I just want to make sure we don't undo the good that we've done at the same time being open to new ideas and figuring out how this is going to make our community even more attractive than it is today and going to drive not only visitors but long-term residents in the goal of having a three hundred and sixty-five day economy. So I guess I'm positive with a note of caution, what can we do to mitigate any of the negative outcomes? And I look forward to hearing more about that later. And I don't want that to be taken as a negative, just a concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Anyone else this evening?
Lisa Mize. Sorry, someone is saying, hey, Aaron, I'm not sure who it is. And also Lindsey and Catherine is here.
All right. I recognize Catherine Simons.
Hi, Catherine Simon, Sagatuck City. I sent a letter to all the council members. I, I will not read it as it's in your packet, I'm assuming. And I have a number of general concerns. I'm not totally against the concept in of itself. What I'm concerned about is that the district encompasses the whole downtown. My property, a butts residential. I'm concerned about the fact that lodging is selling sleep and alcohol enhances noise. So those are divergent items in the business district. I also am somewhat disturbed that there was no survey questionnaire or anything with the businesses directly that are impacted by this. And I'd like the council, if they're unaware, we're all talking about restaurants, but a number of the lodging establishments, including myself, hold food licenses. So we too have been severely impacted by our ability to either stay open, maintain staff, serve food, breakfast sufficiently to warrant being open by being reduced to twenty five percent. So I, I think that you need to take a broader view of who this is impacting. It impacts all of us. I realize we're all intricately interconnected and I certainly support the pop-ups. I actually thought it somewhat enhanced the downtown in the summer. I am concerned about the number of tents that want to be utilized. I don't want to see this become a rowdy area. And that's something that has to be assessed. I also want to see what the added costs are with police and what's the outline of monitoring this. None of that has really been presented. So I'll leave it at that, read my letter and thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. And was that other individual, Lisa Mize?
Yes. Yes, and then also Alec and Lindsey.
All right. Lisa?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Becken. I do support the proposed social districts, especially during the shoulder seasons, even on a trial basis. Our mission, as everyone is aware, at the Sagatuck Douglas Convention Visitors Bureau is to promote our unique offerings and activities to encourage travel and increase visitation to our area. The social districts would give us an additional offering to promote to potential visitors during the very challenging shoulder seasons. I recommend that the council communicate the importance of proceeding with caution on implementing the social districts with the understanding that this concept is evolving and can be modified as needed. And I'm in agreement with all the other people that are in support. I think it would be a plus for the community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Lisa. Alec?
Alec and Lindsey Hayleitner of Grow Cafe and Bistro in Sagatuck. We reside in Fenville. I'm speaking today, as most of us others here, on the social district item agenda. First and foremost, thank you so much, Cindy, Ryan, Aaron, Mr. Mayor and the council for being so wonderfully forward-thinking and moving this forward so quickly. We are in absolute full support of the social district. My one caveat there is in order to preserve this privilege that you are hopefully giving to us as potential permit holders is that we are equipped with the tools needed, an enrollment process, guidelines of sort, particularly as it coincides, if the MLCC rules coincide with the social district guidelines. Examples there would include the specifics of the cups, which to my understanding are to be provided by the permit holders. Currently, selling to-go containers is permissible by people with certain liquor license and those have very specific rules as far as covering straws, things of that nature. So I would be interested what these social district guidelines are with regards to that as far as what the cups look like. Can you just put a sticker on the cup with the logo and the logo to be provided? Guidelines like these, I think, are important, again, to preserve this privilege so that everyone is coming at these, following the rules that they're put in place so that we can slide into this nicely and that this trial period goes well successfully and that we can continue to enjoy it for seasons to come. And thank you again to all those that made this happen so quickly. We are so grateful to be a part of this community.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, Alec. Anyone else this evening?
Gregory Muncy.
All right, Greg?
This is Gregory from Sadapa, also from everywhere else in town, as maybe you guys might already know. Just wanted to say that we have been talking, I have been talking to business members as we've been joining. as we've been joining everybody for our new Sadaba membership and our new map coming out this year, that everybody is in full support of it. Now, I might have a few people that maybe are against it, but most folks are in full support. Most of our business members are in full support of having the A, the new business A pop-up patios as well as the social district as well. We had on our radio show just a couple of weeks ago, the gals from Allegan County Community Foundation, whose office is in downtown Allegan and who has said that, who explained to us that it's been a wonderful success since they launched it in downtown Allegan. And they've had no problems there at all with the social district and the drinking. As far as stores go and how they monitor how people come in with drinks, well, that's their own call. And and they can monitor that that as as they want, as they wish. But anything that brings business to business, I think, is a great idea for our town. I just want to piggyback on what Lisa Myes said and what Alex said and everybody else. And and what I've heard from our board members and from our business owners here in this district where I live. And I'm walking Butler Street and Water Street every day. And most, most of our businesses, retailers are are in favor of the social district. If at any point you'd like to conduct a survey with the with our business owners, as we have all their email contacts, Sadaba would be more than happy to facilitate a survey. But I'm willing to say it's going to be ending up most, most, most folks in favor of it. And that's all I wanted to say. Just wanted to piggyback on Lisa Myes and on Alec.
All right, Greg, thanks for your comments. Anyone else this evening? If none, we'll move on. Thank it. Thanks, everybody for for your insightful comments. I'm sure council appreciates them. Moving on, next agenda item is request for payments accounts payable. Have a motion regarding payment of the bills this evening.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Truster?
I move that we approve the accounts payable to the tune of $632,600.65.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Truster, seconded by Lewis, to pay the bills this evening as presented. As a longtime councilperson, whenever I see bills paying over $600,000, I get a, I need a drink of water and swallow hard. And we need to clarify that of that $632,000, $566,000 is just tax money that are actually passed through to our, to our other authorities in our communities. In fact, other than major and local streets, the city realizes very little, if any, of that, that, that money. So after that clarification comments by council. If none, would the clerk please call the role on a motion?
Truster?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes. Peter, pay those bills, please. Uh, going through our agenda this evening, there are no introduction of ordinance nor public hearings or unfinished business this evening. Moving on to our action items. Action item 13A, pop-up patios. I believe Cindy, you're going to take the lead on this, please.
I can do that, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Last year was the first time we did pop-up patios. And although we had very few troubles, I did make some changes to the application in conjunction, working with Lauren Stanton and Chris Peterson and Ryan. And the substantial changes includes some language suggested by our city attorney to not allow subleasing of your pop-up patio. And that your personal property tax has to be paid up in full before we can issue you a license. And some other legalese the attorney wanted in there, but generally it's the same program as it was last year. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Okay, council, do we have a motion to present this evening?
Mayor?
Scott?
Motion to allow for staff to administer the issue permits for the pop-up patios as described in the attached documents.
Second.
Okay, so a motion by Dean, seconded by Peterson to approve the motions as presented. Council comments?
Mr. Mayor, this is Garn.
Yes, Garnet.
Just wanted to say that I am really excited to see us doing this for our businesses. Last year was a great success. It really added to the ambiance downtown. And I I'm pretty sure that everybody welcomes this. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd also like to give a big thanks to Cindy. She kind of started this upfront proactive approach by letting the businesses have the sidewalk up to the street and was there immediately with the pop-up patio application and and managed it well throughout this last season. I thought hats off to the, all the people that participated. She's, I think, tweaked this so that we're going to have just another wonderful season. Everybody was positive about them. I'm so happy that we're doing it again.
All right, thank you. Other council comments? Yes, Hallie?
I just want to say, echo what's been said. I think it just brought a great energy. People said they felt like they're in Europe or in New York. It was, it was a lot of fun. It really brought a lot of energy. Thank you to Cindy and everybody that worked on it. So I'm just glad that we're going to continue along. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mayor?
Scott?
Thanks. I think this is so important, given that, you know, the latest survey data is showing a good 50% of people, even if restaurant restrictions are lifted, won't feel comfortable indoor dining. So I think this is absolutely critical that we continue this for our businesses. And that's why I'm so excited to see it continue on.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ken.
Way in to make a unanimous. I agree with the other speaker. Plus, I would add, I think it's to Cindy's benefit that she put this together in a way that we can do this with just administrative approval. We don't have to go through a lot of red tape to get approvals to do these things. So it's a good program. Thanks to the committee and to Cindy.
Okay, thanks, Ken. My comment, Cindy, if you respond as necessary. One, these thing, the earliest that the pop-ups can appear will be April 1st.
Correct.
And what happens if we still have piles of snow? Are you going to use some discretion there regarding? I mean, it's possible we still have snowbanks and.
Yeah, it's possible. We did include a phrase in this part where the applicant puts their signature that says if there's a forecastable, if there's a forecast of plowable snow, they need to remove everything from the street for snow plowing. And I also have a personal meeting with each participant and explain that if they don't remove their items from the street, it is very likely they will be damaged by the snowplow. They will be responsible for that. They have given us a certificate of insurance, naming the city as additional insured. And I talked to them face to face about this when they turn in their application.
All right, wonderful. And thanks for all the work done by the, by the committee and especially yourself, Cindy. So that being said, would the clerk please call the role on the motion?
Dean?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes, motion passes unanimously. Next agenda item, Coughlin Park Use Policy. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For those following along in the packet, this is page 18. This item was discussed at the Thursday workshop. For the benefit of the audience, what we're talking about here is an amended policy for Coughlin Park rentals for private events. Currently, the staff is allowed to approve events. We call that administrative approval, but it's really specific to the gazebo. And what we're looking at is expanding beyond the gazebo space into the park space. Of course, that comes with some concerns, which we discussed at the Thursday meeting. So on the cover page here, I've hit the highlights, which include events need to strictly adhere to the COVID-19 restrictions for gatherings and outdoor space. Events cannot occur on holiday weekends or days which have public events that already occur and/or events that are already booked, which may be private. Events cannot be booked in a future calendar year. A $500 refundable deposit is required and will be returned when it's been determined that all of the park is in good shape and all the rules and regulations have been followed. Also, at council's direction, we removed the fact that you could only use one particular vendor. So now people have options for the vendors that they'd like to use. Policy also allows for wedding arches, as long as they're not staked into the ground. Events affiliated with the Sagatuck Center for Arts, the attendees will need to utilize the SCA parking lot. And events that have over 25 people and take and take place from Memorial Day to Labor Day must shuttle in guests from remote locations. So these, these proposed regulations are really an attempt at balancing the the public use of the park by your average taxpayer, parking concerns, concerns with the city already being so busy in the summer months, but still allowing some flexibility for having more events in the park. So it's for the council's consideration, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thanks for the summary, Ryan. Do I have a motion on the item, please?
Oops, sorry, go ahead, Lauren.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the updated Coughlin Park rental policy as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Stanton, seconded by Lewis. Council comments? Questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is probably not a real big deal, but I know that we've have eliminated bird seed, rice, other similar food product, confetti or other material. I was wondering if we would want to add Mylar balloons to that. Maybe not. Maybe that's an oversubification, but they float away and we've seen them end up on Oval Beach many times. So that's just a thought.
Okay, I'll leave that up to council to. Was that discussed at the workshop? I missed the workshop for everybody's. Council knows that, but I was out of town last week, so didn't hear a lot of discussion regarding this, so. All right, it looks like there's not a lot of support for eliminating balloons.
I, I would, I agree, Chris.
Yeah, I'm good with that, too.
It's, yeah, Mayor, it's consistent with the, the prohibition on the, the candle-powered lanterns, which is already in the draft. So I would say, yeah, let's include those Mylar balloons.
All right.
I agree with that, Mr. Mayor. And do we, do we need to propose an amendment then?
I think we can pass it with just that addendum. Whoever made the motion just might want to add that. Forgot already who made the motion. Is it Chris? Lauren, I'm sorry.
Sure, just to amend the motion to approve the updated Coughlin Park rental policy with the addition of eliminating the use of balloons. And Cindy could add that, I believe, to the proposal.
All right, and Chris, do you have the second or Garnet have the second?
I did, this Garnet, I did.
Okay, and you approved a sec, you approved that?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right. Any other questions or comments? My only question to either Ryan or Cindy is relative to attendance, maximum attendance. Under seating, now we're going, as in the past, we allowed seating up to 200 maximum chairs. My question is, how is that affected by COVID requirements and social distancing? Did the discussion get a little more detail about that? I mean, if you're at 50% capacity is really 100 the maximum? Or if it's 25% capacity is at 25%, and then what happens with 200 spread six, six feet apart in the hole?
Yeah, Mayor, I can just, I can answer that. Last summer, there was a government order that, you know, made it limited to outdoor seating up to 100 people. So that's why we included any COVID restrictions in this. If it's limited to 100 people, that's as many as you can have at an outdoor event. We will follow the guidelines by our state.
Thanks for clarifying that. And that usually comes down from the Algen County Health Department is kind of the directives we follow in that. Okay, as long as that's, that's clarified for not only myself, but for the public. Any other comments? If none, would the clerk please call the role on the motion?
Stanton?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes, thank you. Motion passes unanimously. Next item, agenda item is approval of a special event application for the Devers Spoelstra wedding to take place on June 19th. I think we've addressed that at different times. Do I have a motion regarding that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move to approve the special event application for the Spoelstra wedding on June 19th, 2021, as presented.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Truster, seconded by Leo to approve the special event application for the Spoelstra wedding withheld on June 19th, 2021 at Coughlin Park. Any further discussions or questions? If none, with a clerk, please call the role on the motion.
Truster?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
And Becken?
Yes, motion passes unanimously. Next agenda item, Wicks Park Bar and Grill Special Event Application. Cindy Osmond, please.
Sir, I am sorry. I believe Cindy got dropped. She was having spotty internet.
All right, Ryan, pick it up, please.
There she is right now. Speed it up. For one second, dial in with a little audio.
I'm just going from what the agenda says from Cindy Osmond.
Yep, she just got booted a second ago. So just give her a second to get back in.
Got it.
If you're just going to get.
Following along in the packet, this is page 31.
I see her, but I don't hear her.
I got booted three times. I had to redial and get back in. There's just a bad connection tonight.
Yeah, yeah. So why don't you, why don't you pick it up, Ryan?
Yeah, certainly. Yeah, this item was discussed at the, at the workshop as well. And the background on this item, one second.
I might be able to help with this, Ryan.
No, it's no problem. I just went back to the split screen. So this is a request for a tent, which is for a specific period of time, and this is for Wicks Park. And the request is for the dates of March 11th, between March 26th. And the council really has a number of options here as far as approving and or disapproving this request. Originally, the request for a tent, which is outside of the parameters of the pop-up patio or the social district, came to staff on Water Street. We also looked at the option of placing the tent on Mary Street, which would require a closure at the very end of the road, but still allowing for a 12-foot emergency vehicle access. And so the way I see it, council could deny the request in its entirety, allow for the tent on Water Street and/or allow for the tent on Mary Street. Staff is here to answer any questions or be of assistance for your deliberation.
Okay, uh, since again, I Since, again, I did not attend the meeting last Thursday, since we don't really know how we want to, at this time, I don't think present a motion.
Well, Mayor, yeah, Mayor, this is, this is Garnet. I'd like to move to approve the Wicks Park Bar and Grill Special Event Application for outdoor seating with food and alcohol service at the Waters, at the Mary Street with partial road closing as described in the application contingent on the Fire Department approval.
Second.
Okay. All right, now, I will take this opportunity to make one, one comment. As most of you know, my family home is located in the middle of Mary Street, in the north side, 120 Mary. My sister still resides in that family home. She has no issues with the closure as long as she has unfettered access to her driveway. However, she did point out, one thing to me is, well, when cars are parked on Mary Street, headed to the west, how are they going to exit? And I chatted a little bit with Ryan and Cindy about this today. I think it best that this 12-foot emergency access just be a one-way, you know, access leaving Mary Street headed west. So those cars that do park, and we could be talking as many as a dozen cars or more. So they have a way to get to exit that, that area without having to turn around in probably only accessible driveway would be my sister's driveway. So I'd leave that out there. I think it, it, it seems like a simple, a simple adjustment. You wouldn't want people coming in that way, but there's no reason why people can't exit that way. So the people in those parking spaces have a reasonable way to get off of Mary Street without having a real crazy situation developed. So I'm gonna put that out there and see what kind of comments council has.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes.
Just a question for, for Ryan. Do you think that's something that DPW can, can make happen fairly simply the one-way, temporary one-way?
Mr. Dean, unfortunately, I don't, I don't know enough to answer that question. I don't know, as far as signage goes, what capabilities we have in-house, but I'm sure between various departments, we can make it happen. Sorry.
That's good.
Hi, Ryan, it's the phoning in.
Yeah, there she is.
Hi, Cindy.
Yeah.
Did you hear the question from Mr. Dean?
I'm sorry that I got booted out of Zoom. My internet is not very good. I think the DPW could do that without too much trouble at all. So do not enter on the Water Street side and exit on the Mary Street side.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Looking at the handout then on page, well, 26, on the early requirements for tent structures, would that, would that still work width-wise? It says tents shall not be located within 20 feet of lot lines, buildings, or other tents, park vehicles, or whatever. Would that still, if we, if we make that a one-way, is that closing that tent off and being too close then to work per the Fire Department rules? I haven't measured.
I can't see you, so it's hard for me to respond, but I think that's for tents that are like in Coughlin Park, major event tents, not smaller ones for private events. But in any event, Christine has to bring her plan to the Fire Department and get it approved by them before I'll issue the, the permit.
Thank you.
And another added comment, being extremely familiar with that area. The last parking spot on the north side of Mary Street prior to the driveway in question at 120 Mary gives plenty of opportunity to then swing to the north where they won't have parking spaces. This, this, that's a right-of-way they're talking about by the Fire District is actually, I think, existing parking spaces along the north side of Mary. And so there, there's going to be plenty of room there to, to maneuver off the road to the, to the north side of the road and, and exit.
Yeah, I agree with that. There's, there's plenty of room for that, but.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ken.
Being a veteran event tent guy, I'd have a couple of cautions. One, one being tents often require staking and, and, you know, staking out the ropes, and that takes more space than just the tent itself. So we've got to make sure that, that that doesn't interfere with the 12-foot section of traffic.
That would be the case whether it was a, you know, exit road or an emergency access.
Absolutely.
Yes. The other thing I suggested was depending on the dimensions of the, the, the tent, it may be turned so the narrowest part of the trench runs east and west on Mary Street.
That would make sense. I have one other concern, and that is when they stake these things out for us, like in Wicks Park Parking Lot, they typically bore holes in the asphalt and pound the stakes. And so we've got to be careful that it doesn't adversely affect the street out there, too.
Absolutely, yeah. All right, any other, any other comments regarding regarding the, we have a motion on the, the table. So I, you know, I guess you could look at an emergency, you know, exit the same as a road. I, I don't know. Do you want to include that? Excluding things is a bad thing. I just know that there's not going to be any way to get out of that street with parked cars, so.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah. And I think that just, it can be worked out between Cindy, the DPW, Algonquin County, and the Fire District. Be a simple thing to do.
I think most of those things are incorporated into the application and the response and/or the Fire Department sign-off. So I don't have anything else to add to that, other than I think all those things will be addressed.
Okay, so it's come, so what you're saying, Cindy, is that we can leave the motion as it is and you just work that into your, your administrative review?
Yep.
Okay, I, I'm good with that. That's the only concern that I think is a little different than what, what's presented here. So any other further comments? Okay, if none, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Lewis?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
And I'll just mention Chief Janik has joined. I don't know if he had something he wanted to say or not.
Okay, well.
Sorry, maybe not.
Okay, okay, moving on. Next agenda item. Social district. And who's on? I'm getting there.
I, I can.
Cindy?
I can.
You gonna take the lead on that?
Yeah, I can talk about it a little bit. I think you've covered, I think you've covered most of what a social district is. And talked about the pros and the cons. This is, was considered as a pilot program. You can see on page 50, Pilot Program Art 7, 2021 through May 31, 2021. I do, though, respect Lieutenant Enstfield's comments about not including the Labor Day weekend. And that, I think that would not be that good of an idea. So we could end it the week before, the Monday before. That way you get the full weekend of the previous weekend, but you don't get the Labor Day or the Memorial Day weekend. It is encompassing all the commercial zone districts in the downtown. And, you know, you've got to try something before you, you know how it works. And we can do the pilot, work through the good and the bad, figure it out before we decide what we want to do in the fall and when do we want to do it. I don't know if you have any more questions for me? I do suggest that in order to streamline it with like the, the pop-up patios, letting me do it administratively, that you approve all the resolutions for the eligible participants in one fell swoop. And then if somebody wants to apply, I will have the paperwork ready for them to take to the state when they apply for their license. So it's kind of a long motion, but that's the way it goes.
Okay, before we make a motion, should we have a little discussion regarding the term of the pilot program? It shows as ending through May 31st, which is Memorial Day, I believe.
Yep.
Or it's Memorial Day that's Tuesday before, Monday before. You never know with that.
Memorial Day is the 31st.
Okay.
The last Monday in May.
Okay, all right. So thus you would end it a week prior to that?
Yeah, the fourth Monday in May.
Which would be, actually, the last day would be Sunday, May 23rd, or Sun, Monday, May 24th. Makes no difference.
Monday, May 24th.
Yeah. So whoever makes a motion, if they want to include that, or do we want to discuss that, that week?
I, Mayor, I appreciated Lieutenant Enstfield's comments on that and his concerns, so this makes his life easier. And certainly, I, I think regardless of what date you pick in May, that the downtown folks would be pretty happy with that.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'll give a shot at the motion. Motion to adopt Resolution 210222-A for the creation of a downtown Sagittalk Social District and downtown Sagittalk Commons Area pursuant to the downtown Sagittalk Social District Plan as presented in the plan. Didn't I read the rest of that, too?
I think you can do them as two separate motions.
Okay, so that's the first one.
Second.
Okay, so the motion is to adopt Resolution 210222-A as a first action item. Any further discussion or comments? If not, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion? Oh, sorry.
A question for Cindy. One of the citizens who commented tonight expressed concern that the businesses that are not participating in the social district, in other words, they're not allowing people to bring drinks into their business establishment, would have to police it themselves. And as I, as I read the information here, there is a provision that says there, there will be some kind of designation that they can put on the front of their business that, that they're not participating, and you can't bring alcoholic beverages into their establishment. Is that correct?
Actually, it's almost reversed. Businesses who want to allow alcoholic beverages within their business will be provided with a window claim, a sticker, so to speak, that says, "Your alcoholic beverages are welcome here in the social district."
Well, it probably doesn't have to be in this resolution, but we could also provide a window claim that said alcoholic beverages are not permitted inside this establishment.
I'm sure we could do that.
Thank you.
All right, yes. Scott?
I, I would just like to thank all of the residents and business owners for their very thoughtful comments on, on this issue. And I think I just could take it for a moment to the numbers. You know, half a million Americans are dead of COVID-19 as of this week. The National Restaurant Association has said 110,000 American restaurants have closed and may never reopen again. That's put two and a half million Americans out of work. You know, we can't let that happen here in this town. You know, the people that run these businesses know they're part of our community. We've got to help them. And, you know, Michigan Legislature, last summer, by a huge, huge bipartisan majority, adopted the social district concept. 28 cities in Michigan have adopted these districts. One, Potterski, Michigan, has had one in place since the summer and be very successful. They've done it without closing streets, and they haven't had any complaints. So I think this pilot program is very, very worthwhile. I think it's very important that we do it. And there are opportunities for us to, to adjust this experiment as it goes on. I, I discussed it with the city manager, and we can amend the plan. If we don't have the full contingent of licensees that want to participate, we can reevaluate the size of the district, and we can amend our, our district. If we need to revoke it, which I think is unlikely, we can do that fairly quickly with, you know, by having a public meeting, and then we can move to revoke it. So we've got a lot of room to tweak and experiment. I don't think we'll ever know unless we pilot it. I don't think we can compare it to any other city. But what we've seen so far is very positive. We've got 28 other cities in the state that have done it and haven't seemed to have had a problem with it. So I think the numbers speak in favor of doing this, and I, for one, am very supportive.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for your comments, Scott. Other council comments?
Mayor, just real quick.
Yes.
So just something, so I know I received some phone calls and had a lot of conversations with business owners in town. And one of the things that people were maybe a little confused about or just not understanding why the social district is so large. But if you look at those 28 other places that have social districts in the state, you're trying to cover everyone that has a liquor license in your area. That way, nobody is, has any favoritism towards a blocked-off street or someplace where, oh, we're just going to get these two establishments because they're closest to the common area. By creating the social district that's larger and then having several common areas throughout your social district, it means everybody is on the same playing field. So that's why you set up the way it is.
I have one comment to that. The Southerner, thank you. The Southerner is not included because it's not contiguous to the Commons Area. And you need at least two restaurants contiguous to the common area to create a common area, so I can't create one just for them.
Thanks for the clarification. Holly?
Yeah, I would just to build on, on what Lauren said. I spoke with Becky Goodman today, who's the Downtown Director of Potterski, and they passed this in August, and they were the first city to do a citywide social district. And, you know, they have had, it's been very successful. They don't promote it at, as a party or as an alcohol-centered anything. They, they simply look at it as a perk. So if you're waiting in line for your restaurant or you're strolling around shopping, it's just sort of a, a benefit or a perk. And they really haven't had any issues. They've been really happy with it. And no increased public safety issues. And I've been talking to Jerry Johnson, who was kind enough to come and speak in the public comments. We've been talking since November, and she just raves about it. She said they've had a fantastic winter, what would have been very quiet, and that her community just embraced it. And I just think it's important that we're a creative community, we're trying new things, and we're willing to make adjustments. You know, that's what we did with pop-up patios, and I look at this in the same light. So I just want to thank everybody who weighed in.
Okay, thank you.
One, one final request, Mayor.
Yes.
I would ask city staff to find a way to build this into our future agendas as we go through this pilot. So if we do get feedback, we can make adjustments to the social district. I would like to have frequent feedback from, from the community and from city staff on how it's going. For example, you know, Northville's hours of operation are 12 to 10 p.m. I think Potterski ends theirs at 9 p.m. I think currently the curfew for the restaurants is 10 p.m. anyway. So there's some, I mean, these aren't deal breakers, but I do think we need to continue to look at it closely. And maybe if we just make these small adjustments as we go along, we can avoid some unintended consequence that some of the residents have, have voiced concerns over.
All right, okay. Good points, good points. Cindy, again, I missed that meeting. I don't know if this discussion came out. But in the, the handout, it states that the containers will containers will have some type of logo or identification for the establishment that you can get the alcohol beverage from, one per customer. But also it's something about having a city logo or a city imprint put on or, well, any thoughts? I mean, are you going to do it with a, some type of a sticker? Will that sticker be dated so someone can't continue to use this cup for the whole summer and go to their, you know, cooler in the back of their car? So.
There's no, it's not during the summer, fucker.
Well, let's say.
Hey, hey. But Erin and I have been working on the logo for the entrance and exit signs when you come into the district and leave the district. And our idea is to make the sticker or logo have the map on it. Is the meeting still going on or did we cancel it?
No, we're going. Keep going.
We're going.
Okay. So we would have the district outlined with the map showing the major streets where it ends and starts and a place for a date either on the sticker or on the cup itself with a Sharpie. So that, that's kind of where we're thinking that we'll lean toward.
Well, my point is that the establishments will have to get their own containers with their own imprint on them. And then to add another imprint to it could be problematic as opposed to just a sticker that it could, could go on and then they could maybe put the date that the drink was.
I tried, I tried looking at some of the cups that they use for the to-go things. And I didn't have time to go to the Butler for lunch today, but I did want to look at their cup that they, they used so I could get an idea of what that was and how, what's the lead time in ordering them and so on. But I think at least in the beginning, they could just use a sticker. It would be cheaper.
So you're, you're on top of this. You'll, you'll get something that.
My head is spinning with it.
Yeah. I think it has to be acceptable to the county, the sheriff's department, too. So it's identifiable and only used, you know, one time. So, any more discussion on this?
Yeah, Mayor, real quick, this is Garn. I just wanted to thank our, our committee of Lauren, Chris, Cindy and Ryan, who met and put this proposal together and all the background and research they put into this. Thank you so much for your efforts.
Right, right. It was, it was pulled together relatively quickly. I appreciate the concerns by the people who said that, you know, there's issues with maybe this social district that, that, that could, could develop. The thing is, those are unknowns and we don't know what we don't know. But we do know that our restaurants are in trouble. And this, I think, is may not be a lifeline, but it, it, it could be something that will, will help them either get back on their feet or, or continue to stay open. So those are my comments. Any other comments by council?
Um, may, if I may, what are, what are the next steps? So all of the restaurants now have packets that they take to the MLCC. And then I, I believe there's several steps, so this should take a couple of weeks, probably.
It probably will. I do have to submit the plan and the resolution to the MLCC for them to start approving these applications. But when we, if we go ahead and do the resolution to approve all the, the eligible restaurants, they will have that paper in their hands to take to the MLCC as soon as possible. And I'm, I'm sure there are restaurants like Coast 236 that will help me get in touch with the right people to get it submitted as soon as possible. It does have a 10-day waiting period after publication. I suspect we can get it in next week's commercial, commercial record. So it will be effective almost immediately. And we'll just go from there. We have to, I think that there's all kinds of little tiny adjustments that we'll have to make along the way. Who submits to what? What submits to who? Who comes first, the chicken and the egg? But we can work it out. I mean, that's what we're good at.
Yeah, alright.
You're good at that, Cindy.
Okay. That being said.
I'll call the question.
Yeah, let's have a call, a roll call on the motion A that was presented, please.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes. So the second part of the social district implementation, motion-wise, is resolution number 210222-B. Do I have a motion to approve that as presented, please?
Mayor, this is Garn.
Yes.
Yep, motion to adopt resolutions 210222-B through 210222-U for local governmental unit for social district permits for the businesses listed, unless you want me to read them all.
As presented is good for me.
It would be a good, I, I think it would be a good idea to read.
Okay.
Alright, so the district permits for the Sandbar Saloon, Coral Gables, Marlow's Restaurant, The Butler, Wally's, Phil's Bar and Grill, Wick's Park Bar and Grill, Scooter's Cafe and Pizzeria, Bodie's, Loco Burrito, Mermaid Bar and Grill, Lucy's Little Kitchen, Copper Craft Distillery, The Barge, Retro Boat Rentals, The Mint and Brewing Company, Grow, Pumper Nichols, Coast 236, New Holland Brewing.
Have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, so a motion by Lewis, seconded by Truster to approve resolution number 210222-B. Any further discussion?
We need to amend the dates on this portion. Because we didn't amend the dates on the first motion, so I don't know if we need to amend the dates on the second motion.
Cindy, reply?
Yep, you can amend the date, please.
Yep, okay. Let me try that again. Motion to adopt these resolutions for local governmental units for social districts for all the restaurants or businesses listed. Pilot program from March 7th, 2021 through May the 24th, I think it was.
Yep.
2021.
Perfect.
You're good, Cindy?
I'm good.
Alrighty, if no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll on the motion.
Lewis?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yeah.
Stanton?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes. A motion passes unanimously. Thanks, everybody, for, for your work on this. Next agenda item, the floating home moratorium, second version. Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe we have legal counsel Cliff Bloom on the call tonight. He's going to discuss the second version of the moratorium on the floating homes. Mr. Bloom?
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, can you hear me? This is Cliff Bloom.
Yes, Cliff.
Great. I'm not even trying the internet since I'm in a rural area, so I thought I'd just call in. This is a proposed replacement moratorium ordinance for the one that the council passed about a month ago. What we did is we took the comments from the public meeting and also discussed it with staff and went in a little bit different direction. So rather than calling them houseboats, which I think caused confusion, we changed it to floating homes, beefed up the definition so that hopefully it will only cover those structures that the city might find objectionable, tweaked some more of the language, inserted a grandparent clause for any floating home that was lawfully in existence and in the water as of July 1, 2020. And that's basically it, Mr. Mayor. If this is enacted by the city council, it would replace the one from a month ago in its entirety. We have already produced a working draft of a permanent ordinance that staff is reviewing. And after we tweak it, it will be available for council review.
Okay, so as part of the motion, Cliff would be inserting the, the dates starting today? The introduction of the ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, it would be effective when the notice of adoption appears in the newspaper, which would be one day after it appears in the newspaper. And presumably, if the council takes action tonight, I presume it will be in the newspaper within the next couple of days. There's actually a repealer provision in this ordinance, so it would automatically repeal the prior ordinance from a month ago when the new one becomes effective.
Oh, no dates need to be stated in the motion?
Correct.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm, I'm moved to approve the amended moratorium as presented.
Second.
Okay, again, I know council had considerable discussion about this at the workshop. I, I have no, no, no problems with this, as we will be considering a actual ordinance in the not-too-distant future, which would replace this. So this is more, I look at it more as a housekeeping item than anything else. Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion, a second, regarding approval of the amended moratorium endorsement. Would a clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Peterson?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Truster? Becken?
Yes, motion passed unanimously. Cliff, before you leave, I would assume that council will have another stab at the actual ordinance in the future, working off a draft, maybe having some questions, wanting to clean up something, maybe a little more definitions, so on and so forth. Is that correct?
Absolutely. The proposed ordinance is much more comprehensive. It, it contains the same definition as the moratorium does, but again, it can be tweaked. And candidly, it'll take a little time, I think, for council members to go through it and come up with the right product in the end. But we stand ready and able with staff to work with everyone on this.
Alright, thank you. Motion, council, any questions for Mr. Bloom before he leaves us this evening?
Yep. Thanks for your help, Cliff.
If none. Okay, thank you. Good night, Cliff. Thank you for taking time out of your schedule.
Thanks, everyone. Take care.
You bet. Okay, moving on in the agenda, we have no consent agenda. We have a second opportunity for the council to address the, or for the public to address the council on any item they wish. If you want to address the council, please ask to be recognized, identify yourself by name and community of residence and limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anybody out there?
Jane Underwood?
Yes, this is Jane, Sagatuck. Being old, I was able to take the trip to Plainwell last Friday for my first COVID shot, thank heavens. And afterwards, for you young folks, you have to sit and wait to be sure you don't have a reaction. And I was delighted and really comforted to see two of Sagatuck's finest, Dr. Blatt and Chief Janik, were circulating among the senior citizens just checking on us. I was really proud of my community. Thank you.
Thanks, Jane. Anyone else out there would like to address the council? Okay, if none of the public comment section of the meeting is closed, we have two communications this evening in our packet, one from Mr. John Vanderbeek, basically regarding the fence located at Dungarass Marina and from a Ms. Lori Shemka, who complimented the city regarding the quality in, in digital presentation of our council packet. So thanks to Erin Wilkinson on that. Erin gets an atta girl, so. Okay, moving on, boards and commissions report. Do we have any reports this evening? I do have one from Cal Lake. Anyone other than myself? Alright, Cal Lake had their monthly meeting today. It was one of the few times we actually did not have any actionable items, as we had two meetings prior month that really took up a lot of our, our, our work. We spent a majority of our time, we, we did get updates on operations and as you might expect, there are several water breaks in the community due to the weather, freezing pipes. Had one in Sagatuck on Park Street and one in Douglas. And they're being, I, I, there'll be, there'll be, they're being attended to and repaired. We were joined in our meeting by Steve Bishop, who is our Cal Lake engineer from Fleece and Vandenberg. He gave us an update on our, their water reliability study, which is required by EGO, which I believe is a minimum of every three to five years you have to have it in. This is a draft. He went through the draft, highlighted some things, very informative if you're, if you're into water systems. And we'll get the final product in the near future, submit it to EGO for their, their approval, then it'll be distributed to our communities. While Steve was, joined us, we went over a list of anticipated, anticipated projects that are coming up that will need proposals from Fleece and Vandenberg, including a 2021 fire hydrant flow testing study. Again, something that's kind of every three years needs to be done. The next portion of the sewer system cleaning and television scanning of, of the sewer mains in our community. We're working on putting in a permanent generator along Clearbrook Creek. There's a major lift station along Clearbrook, just south of the clubhouse down on Goshorn Creek. That's a very challenging project. Lift station, generate, replacement of the generator that the major lift station, which is by Peterson Mill, generator, a replacement of generator at the township wells, which are located by the cemetery, and then purchase of two portable generators. Those items are going to be presented to us hopefully in March, no later in April. Price tag on those about 600,000 bucks and they are a budgeted item. So, other than that, that was it with Cal Lake. So one more call for any other committee reports? If done, council comments? Feel free to go for it.
Sure. Mayor, this is Garn.
Yeah.
Real quick, I just wanted to, I, I shared this already with Scott Herbert at DPW, but I sent along a thank you to them for all their work with the snow plowing and especially keeping the sidewalks, you know, as clear as they possibly can, given everything with my, my elderly dog and I greatly appreciate it. And so I've shared that with them, but I also want to do so publicly because they do good work.
You bet.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Ken.
Like our friend Jane, I was able to receive my COVID shot Friday, actually, at Elgin Middle School. And who was there but Fire Chief Greg Janik, again, spending the whole day taking care of people. So my thanks to him for all the good work he's doing on this project. They have, geez, I don't know, maybe hundreds of volunteers working. It's, it's a major operation to, to put this on. And I know Greg's right in the middle of managing it, so thank you.
Yeah, that guy, that guy's everywhere, it seems like it, isn't it? Any other council person comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Lauren?
Yeah, I just want to thank everyone who spoke at tonight's meeting and who were involved in a lot of the process of coming up with the social district. I mean, everybody who shared their opinions tonight. And I know there were a lot of letters that we didn't get to read publicly, but they were sent to all of us council members and we just appreciate their input. And again, it's a pilot program and I hope you trust that we will make tweaks as we can. And I appreciate optimism in our community. And I appreciate optimism in our community and I hope we continue to have optimism as we try new things.
Thank you, Lauren. Chris? Yes, Chris?
I would second what Lauren said. I think that's the enthusiasm and the excitement, as well as some of the concerns were adequately expressed tonight, as well as I hope you saw that the city council is, is willing to listen as we move forward with this pilot project. I really want to thank our staff. We got a lot done tonight. And our streets are clean and things are moving smoothly. We have outstanding staff and I just want to thank them.
All right, thanks, Chris. Any other council comments? Again, I, I also want to thank the staff and I want to thank council for coming prepared this evening. This was a real hefty agenda. And we, we moved along and everyone was prepared with their comments. They were thoughtful and cogent, as well as our citizens who attended and offered their comments. So I want to thank everybody. If that's it, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting, please.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Louis, seconded by Peterson to adjourn the meeting. Clerk, please call the roll on the motion.
Louis?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Truster?
Yes.
Becken?
Yes.
And as much as I appreciate your compliment, it rightfully belongs with the city manager and Cindy Osman and Peter Stanislavsky, because my contribution to the packet is the very least among them.
Well, you make it look good.
Yeah, I, I think we set a record tonight, a 91-page packet. I've never seen
Yeah.
Wool foil.
Okay, well, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a nice evening.
All right, thanks, everybody.